We're going to call this meeting to order at 5:02. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person here in the boardroom. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NVUSD.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting agenda begins at 5:15. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, is there any public comment on closed session items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
Thank you. Trustee Water, did you receive any public comment on closed session items?
I received no public comments on closed session items.
Thank you, Trustee Water. Seeing that there are none, the Napa Valley Unified School District will now adjourn into closed session. Thank you. We will see you at 5:15. Good evening. We are reconvening to open session at 5:17. My name is Robin Jankowicz and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a board meeting tonight that all can participate remotely via Zoom or in person here in the boardroom. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Isidra Menkos and Francisco Mesa. May we please have one of the interpreters translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families can hear the instructions?
Sure. Muy buenas tardes. La interpretación en español está disponible para la reunión virtual de la junta directiva de esta noche. En un momento, en su computadora aparecerá un icono del mundo terráqueo. Haga clic en donde dice Spanish o español para elegir su idioma. Y en una tableta o celular, busque tres puntitos desde la aplicación Zoom y haga clic ahí y vaya donde dice Language Interpretation o Interpretación del Idioma y haga clic en Spanish o español. Gracias. Thank you.
Yes. Report on closed session. Trustee Water, do you have any items to report on closed session?
I do. E1, Report on Closed Session Items in Closed Session. The board took action to approve a settlement agreement in the matter of American Canyon 1 LLC versus Napa Valley Unified School District, Napa County Superior Court Case Number 22 CV001145. Per the terms of the settlement agreement, American Canyon 1 LLC's successor and interest will pay the district the amount of $864,566.26 in statutory developer fees within five business days after the effective date of the agreement. The parties agree to terminate their obligations under the 2016 School Facilities Funding Agreement. The district will release the lien of that agreement from title to American Canyon 1 LLC's property and American Canyon 1 LLC will dismiss the lawsuit with prejudice. And on a motion by Trustee Gracia and a second by Trustee Gonzalez-Meira, the board voted 6-0 unanimously.
Thank you very much, Trustee Water. Before we conduct our official roll call for this evening's organizational meeting, we have the pleasure and honor of swearing in our new trustees who are elected during the latest election cycle. We are so excited to have Napa City Councilmember Liz Alessio, who has joined us this evening to conduct the swearing in of our four board members. Ms. Alessio, can you please come to the podium to administer the oaths of office for our newly-elected trustee Juliana Hart and three elected incumbents, Trustee Gonzalez-Morris and Water and myself?
Well, first of all, I want to thank, or thank you for this incredible honor. I've never had this opportunity. I remember when I took the oath for city council in 2018 and what an amazing moment that it just filled the air of the room. And I know this will happen the same for each of you. What you do for our community really has no bounds and measure. You're here for our kids. You're here to provide them a quality education that's equitable to all. And I just thank you for your service. I thank you for your sacrifice. I know sometimes it's thankless and not everybody understands the issues that you're faced with and the decisions, the hard decisions you're faced to make. But I just want to thank you again for your courage and what you're doing for this community. Without kids, what kind of community would we have, right? And as we look into the future with our future generation and these children are going to be, as they grow, as they grow up and they become young professionals and family members and stewards of this community, what would it be if we didn't have a quality education for them? So I will start now if this is a good time.
This is a great time. Elba, you will go first, please.
I'm going to stand.
Yeah, stand from there.
And I know each, each one of you too, and I just can't think of better people to take this position. So thank you. Okay, so Elba, repeat after me. I, Elba Gonzalez-Morris,
I, Elba Gonzalez-Morris,
do solemnly swear,
solemnly swear,
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies,
against all enemies,
foreign and domestic,
and domestic,
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation,
without any mental reservation,
or purpose of evasion,
purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully,
well and faithfully,
discharge of the duties,
discharge of the duties,
upon which I'm about to enter,
upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations. Thank you, Elba.
When you take pictures. Elba, would you like your family to come up and have a picture?
How about a picture with the council?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. I read aloud my votes. I see they're all agreed that I'm the candidate. Why don't the council members?
Yeah, so.
First, yeah.
A little side note, Elba and I share the same birthday. Aw, not the same year, unfortunately.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
And Juliana Hart. And there's a little coincidence there too. My maiden name is Hart. See all these little ties? So Juliana, please repeat after me. I, Juliana Hart,
I, Juliana Hart,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will defend, that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies,
against all enemies,
foreign and domestic,
foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith,
bear true faith,
and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States,
allegiance to the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of California,
Constitution of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation,
without any mental reservation,
or purpose of evasion,
purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully discharge,
that I will well and faithfully discharge,
the duties upon,
duties upon,
which I'm about to enter,
which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Juliana. You'll tackle with us today. And now for Robin Jankowicz. Yes, Robin. Repeat after me. I, Robin Jankowicz,
I, Robin Jankowicz,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support and defend,
that I will support and defend,
the Constitution of the United States,
Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies,
against all enemies,
foreign and domestic,
foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
that I will bear true faith and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation,
without any mental reservation,
or purpose of evasion,
or purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully discharge,
that I will well and faithfully discharge,
the duties upon which I'm about to enter,
duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations, Robin.
Yeah, we got a good picture. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Right, thanks.
Okay, last but certainly not least. Cindy, you've done this a time or two. Repeat after me. I, Cindy Water,
I, Cindy Water,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
against all enemies,
against all enemies,
foreign and domestic,
foreign and domestic,
that I will bear true faith,
that I will bear true faith,
and allegiance,
and allegiance,
to the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the United States,
and the Constitution of the State of California,
Constitution of the State of California,
that I take this obligation freely,
that I take this obligation freely,
without any mental reservation,
without any mental reservation,
or purpose of evasion,
or purpose of evasion,
and that I will well and faithfully,
that I will well and faithfully,
discharge of the duties,
discharge the duties,
upon which I'm about to enter,
which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Liz.
President Jankowicz, one last photo. I have a request from the communications team who's thinking websites and social media posts. If the four trustees that just got sworn in, if you could please come to the front for a photo. And Councilmember Alessio, if you could join them, please. We can't pass up the photo opportunities here.
Now, can we, pardon me. Now, can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Riser.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez-Morris.
Present.
Trustee Chu.
Present.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
Coram, present. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Yara. Okay, thank you. Trustee Hart, would you like to lead us in the flag suit? This meeting is livestreamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced and located on the district webpage at NVUSD.org. The public can join the virtual board meeting remotely via Zoom. Participation instructions and the process for public comment can be found on the district webpage. Now for approval of the agenda, may I please get a motion?
Move to approve.
Trustee Gracia, first by Trustee Gracia, second by Trustee Chu, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. And we move on to presentations and discussion, discussion items under General Services. Recognition and presentation of service awards for supporting the Measure A1 and Measure A2 campaigns. Before I make a comment, Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you very much. The board would like to acknowledge, honor, and celebrate four individuals who went above and beyond in dedication and service to their communities. We would like to express our gratitude to campaign coordinators Barb Franco and Kasama Lee for their extraordinary, steadfast, and exemplary work leading our campaigns. We would like to express our deepest appreciation to City Councilmember Liz Alessio and Mayor Leon Garcia for their incredible contributions as elected officials to the campaign efforts. We hope to cultivate a future desire for more elected officials to support our schools the way you both did during the 2022 campaign. Barb and Kasama, you both understood the importance of community conversations. You leveraged the strength of individual conversation, conversations, and understood the ultimate power of community voice. We applaud you. When over 50% of the community votes in favor, that translates to tremendous progress, enormous gains, and igniting important dialogue about educational dollars and how they impact our schools and our children. Kasama, you are a bright light. American Canyon, with you as their guide, helped turn all of those conversations, those voices, into the affirmative. Your level of commitment was infectious. You took great pride in your work and your community proudly rose to the occasion. Thank you. Leon, I know you are not here, but this will be archived. So you led by example. You continue to support education and work diligently to ensure that American Canyon takes pride in their schools. And we thank you. You are a warrior. You exhibited strength, finesse, commitment, and endless perseverance. You never stopped. You created opportunities for conversations and addressed the campaign with utter conviction. A Herculean, Herculean effort. Thank you. Councilmember Alessio, you thought outside the prescribed box. You understood that the infrastructure, the framework of this community involves education. You gave credence to the importance of how we provide that infrastructure to our children and our faculty and helped broaden the true definition of what community should mean. Thank you. On behalf of the board and the Napa Valley Unified School District, Dr. Macedi will now present you with these awards recognizing the selfless service you provide to your communities. Thank you.
Are we good? We have some, okay, great. Well, I want to, I think I'm going to do it like this. Listen, they're here. You know, I want to just echo all of the words of President Jankowicz. And I know Assistant Superintendent Mike Pearson and myself, when we had to find leadership in our community to support our bond campaigns in service to the 16,000 students of this community, we could not have found two more incredible campaign coordinators and managers to lead the effort. And we are so grateful for your time, your commitment, and your service, and most importantly, your leadership. Your leadership was extraordinary and to devote the amount of time, passion, and energy. And I know families were behind you. Some of them are here. Some of them are at home. And the support of your families behind you while you moved the mountain forward of these two bond campaigns and doing something historic in the community because it was the first time that NVUSD pursued two distinct measures. And you both just were exemplary in leading us through this, you know, first attempt. So thank you so much for your service. We're so grateful that we have people like you in the community that we can lean upon to ensure that we can continue to provide equity and excellence in our educational system. So please do not forget that with all the love, the sweat, the tears of the last few months, that's who you were doing it for and that's everything that we've accomplished thus far and will continue to accomplish. All of this contributes to our present and our very, very bright future. So I am going to start off and there are going to be photo opportunities here as well. So I'd like to invite up Barb Franco, who is the campaign coordinator in Napa for Measure A1.
Well, I definitely learned a lot working on the bond. Being a non-political person, I entered into a world that was really new to me. And I'm not used to being given an assignment that I wasn't able to sort of bring it home. And I've sort of prided myself through my career when given something to do, to do my best and get it done. And though we weren't successful with Measure A1, I feel just like we did everything we possibly could. And I was so grateful for people that stepped forward to help us. For my husband, for putting almost 500 signs together. I'm grateful for him for doing that. And Vic Franco, who said, "I'm not going to help you do anything," and ended up doing actually quite a bit to help me. But it was a really new experience for me. Like I said, a real learning experience. I was honored to be able to be asked to do this, have this responsibility, and committed myself 100% actually to seeing that we were going to be successful. And I almost kind of feel like we won. We didn't quite, but if you round it up, it is actually 55%. So I don't know why John couldn't see it like that. My husband told me that in the math world, that actually is 55%. So next time, we're going to go bigger and we're going to go bolder. And we really are going to get the message to the people in our community about the state of our schools and how important it is for our students to have the best learning environments that we can provide for them. So thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Thank you, Barb.
And don't you forget it. You laid a tremendous foundation for our future. So we'll work on the legislature, changing the law and doing the roundup rule for the next. Okay, so we're going to continue with campaign coordinators. Next, we want to honor our campaign coordinator for Measure A2, Ms. Kasama Lee.
Well, good evening. Um. Oh. Okay, we're not gonna, we're not gonna cry over this talk that we're gonna have. So I just want to say that sometimes you take on something in life and you, you didn't know what you were taking on. You kind of take the wheel of the bus and you say you're going to drive it because you missed a meeting and you were told that people nominated you. Those who are watching from home, you know who you are, and Lisa. And that faithful day that Dr. Macedi texted me and said, "Could we talk?" I said, "Oh, no." But we had a great conversation and I knew that there was a need. And I understood that and I knew that there was going to be support. So first and foremost, I want to thank NVUSD. Lisa, please don't cry because, okay, because I'm talking and I'm trying not to cry. I want to thank the entire board of NVUSD, Dr. Macedi, for your vision for the kids. Getting a school bond done is not a popular thing, but it's a necessary thing. We need to do this for our next generation. My second one is graduating this year. I had no business trying to do this. But I wanted us together in the community of American Canyon to leave a legacy, you know? We need to do that. We need to pay it forward. As my other counterpart, Heidi Sapey, would say, "We got to pay it forward." It's not just about us. It's about what's to come. It's about creating a story and inspiring the next group of parents and community members to continue on. Guess what? This is not going to be the last bond, is it? Schools are still going to break down and there's, there's still going to be the need for improvement. And I want to sincerely thank Lisa Chu for not only nudging me to, to sign on, but also to have really dedicated her time. We use my office as the A2, we call it the campaign headquarters, the phone bank center. And Lisa probably lived there more than I did. She was there every day. And I miss you dearly now that the bond campaign is over. But I do want to say something that's, that's been on my heart that this takes a village. This work takes a village. And fortunately, in American Canyon, we had, and what I've learned, just like Barb, never, I'm not a political person, didn't have campaign experience, but we had some really great guidance and mentor through the consultant and the board. It, I was looking at the ages of the people who were actively participating in getting this bond done. And it was from three and a half years old to 93 years old. They were walking. They were dropping off flyers. People were making phone calls. And I want to say kudos to the, our American Canyon High School kids who kicked this thing off, not knowing what they were doing. They just followed the script, but they picked up the energy that we needed. There's so many people to thank, all of you who are watching the A2 leaders. I texted you this morning and I promised you that I was bringing you with me. You're here with me because this, this- this, this happened because all of us came together to pull this off for the kids, and I hope that we all learn as community leaders that this is something that is, that is needed in Napa and continuing on in American Canyon, and we're blessed to have all of you as the board of trustees to get behind this thing and to be firm with your uh, resilience and your vision, regardless of how thingless it may be sometimes. On behalf of the parents and the community leaders, I just want to say thank you from the bottom of our hearts for being who you are, for all of our kids, the entire Napa County. Thank you. I'm blessed to be here. Thank you very much.
Hey, um, we have an innovation um, in this recognition ceremony. Um, in addition to honoring our campaign managers, coordinators, Barb Franco and Kasama Lee for their incredible work around A1 and A2, we also wanted to start a new tradition, and that is honor um, community members who um, really got behind the idea of supporting the schools. We know schools are the epicenters of community because they serve children. And I think um, Councilmember Alessio, when she was swearing our trustees in earlier, um, she's kind of the star of the show tonight in many ways. Um, she, she spoke about that, and she mentioned that, the, that with, what is a community without its children? And we know that our children need high-quality education. So I um, uh, you know, as we were navigating uh, the complexities of two campaigns, um, we had to reach out to community members who could stand behind these efforts that were focused on schools and kids. And we just could not have asked for a better partner in this work. Um, Councilmember Alessio um, really responded to the call to action. Um, it really was a plea um, on behalf of my office, I know the board and the organization at large, to find um, some key critical leaders in our community who could stand up for children and for our schools, and she did exactly that. Um, President Janquitz read a beautiful speech, and you weren't in, I almost want to ask you to read it again because she didn't hear it, and then we'll um, invite her to come on up. So why don't you just come on up now and hear it, and then we'll um, give you your award? Just her, her piece.
Councilmember Alessio, you thought outside the prescribed box. You understood that the infrastructure, the framework of this community involves education. You gave credence to the importance of how we provide that infrastructure to our children and our faculty, and helped broaden the true definition of what community should mean. We thank you.
So without, we want to provide you this service award.
Now it's doing so well, not to get teared up and choked up, um, this. Wow, um, this means a lot to me. It really does. Um, as a, as a Napa kid who uh, grew up in our local schools and so many fond memories of education and teachers and coaches that were, you know, just fundamental and core to the person I am, in addition to my parents. When I was asked by Dr. Masetti to support this, and I did, you know, as I said, as I expressed in a letter to the editor, I had some, I had some questions because I honestly, I didn't have a real good understanding of the funding for the school district. And I, and so it just, once I learned, I could not turn my back knowing how critically we needed Measure A1 to pass. And I think the only reason it didn't pass is there's just a lot of things happening in everybody's world, and for some reason, we just couldn't get that information across to enough people for it to pass. So, so close. And I need to thank Barb Franco um, for your service and your name, putting your name out there. Uh, that was another reason, um, and we haven't really met, but boy, we, Barb Namco was like, oh, that's, that's someone you're gonna listen to, that's someone you trust. And thank you. It's, it's a, it's a tall order uh, to run a campaign, and I understand how both these uh, campaign managers feel, because first time I ran, I had really no understanding of what I was doing, Elba could contest to that, she was there trying to coach me through some of it. Um, but it was really, it's a, it's a call of the heart to serve, is what it is. And um, both these women behind me follow that, that service, that call to the heart of action and service. Um, and I'm just so honored, I was even considered to support such an important, critical need in our community for our children. I, I, I just, and again, so thank you for allowing me to be a part of this. Um, I believe we will pass it the next time. Um, there was nothing that was drawn wrong, everything was done right. It's just, was, we were just shy in the time, and there's just a lot of things that everybody has on their mind and they're working through right now, so there's just a lot out there. But um, this, this means a lot to me, completely unexpected. I laughed because I was gonna rush, rush to the college trustees, because a friend of ours is getting sworn in there. No, no, are you kidding? Um, I'll take this, sorry, Jenny. Um, but um, no, this was just, I'm, I'm just so surprised and truly honored. So thank you, and again, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Liz, and um, uh, just for the record, um, Mayor Leon Garcia is the community member from American Canyon, who uh, we would be honoring as a supporter for Measure A2. He's unable to be here this evening, but we have his award, we'll be sure to get it to him. And so we want to thank everybody again on behalf of the board and the, and the Napa Valley Unified School District. Thank you so much for all of your support of Measure A1 and A2, we really appreciate it. All right, we're gonna proceed then, thank you. Oh, yeah, more pictures? Yeah, okay, so bond um, coordinators, Liz.
We need to thank you too, and Mike Pearson, by the way, I wish I had an award for you and Mike for all the extra hours, and I can't imagine. So I want to thank both of you, I'm sorry I didn't say that earlier, thank you.
Maybe in between. Ah, perfect, perfect. All right. One, two. One, two.
Now we move on to G, Annual Organization of the Board of Education Election of Governing Board Officers for 2023. As board president, um, I will make the nominations as this is a rotation. So first nomination of the president, David T. Gracia, may I please get a motion?
So moved.
First by trustee Gonzalez Morris.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu, all in favor?
Aye.
Nomination accepted. Nomination of Vice President, trustee Cindy Water.
We took proof.
First by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu, all in favor?
Aye.
Nomination accepted. Nomination of clerk, I will nominate Eve Reiser.
Second.
Second by, first by uh, trustee Janquitz, second by trustee Gracia, all in favor?
Aye.
Nomination accepted. And then we have the appointment of superintendent as secretary to the Board of Education.
Move to approve.
No vote needed. We will now briefly, uh,
No vote needed.
Oh, for the appointment?
Yep.
Okay, my apologies, um, first by trustee Gracia.
Second.
Second by trustee Chu, all in favor?
Aye.
Appointment accepted. We will now briefly adjust our seating to reflect the changes and welcome trustee Gracia to president.
All right.
He didn't pull out.
He's happy.
We're gonna, we're gonna move on into action items. H1A, Adoption of the Board of Education Regular Board Meeting Calendar for 2023-24.
Move to approve.
Second.
First by uh, trustee Chu, second by trustee Hart, uh, student board member.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Post, motion passes. Uh, next is uh, H1B, Board Member Liaisons and Representatives to Specified Committees for 2023. H1B1, Special Education Community Advisory Committee, who would like to serve on the Special Education Community Advisory Committee?
I would like to serve on that committee.
I motion to approve.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Water, student board member.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. H1B2, City of American Canyon Liaison Representative, who would like to serve as a liaison representative to the City of American Canyon?
I would like to serve.
I would also like to serve.
So moved. So moved.
I'll second.
First by trustee Water, second by trustee Gonzalez Morris, student board member.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. H1B3, City of Napa Liaison Representative, who would like to serve as a liaison to the City of Napa?
I would like to serve.
I like to serve.
And I would like to serve.
So moved.
Second.
First by uh, trustee Reiser, second by trustee Water, student board member.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. H1B4, City of Yountville Liaison Representative, who would like to serve as a liaison to the City of Yountville?
I would like to serve.
I would also like to serve.
So moved.
I'll second.
First by trustee Water, second by trustee Gonzalez Morris, uh, student board member.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. H1B5, Curriculum and Student Support Committee, who would like to serve on the Curriculum and Student Support Committee?
I would like to serve.
I would like to serve.
And I also would like to serve.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Water, second by trustee Chu, student board member.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. H1B6, Facilities and Technology Committee, who would like to serve on the Facilities and Technology?
I would like to serve.
I would like to serve.
I would also like to serve.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Reiser, second by trustee Gonzalez Morris, uh, student board member.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
H1B7, Finance Committee, who would like to serve on the Finance Committee?
I would like to serve.
I would like to serve.
I would like to serve.
And I also would like to serve on that committee.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Water, second by trustee Reiser, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. H1B8, Policy Committee, who would like to serve on the Policy Committee?
I like to serve.
I would like to serve.
I would also like to serve.
So moved.
Second.
First by trustee Warner, second by trustee Reiser, student board member.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed.
President Gracia, can I go ahead and just summarize for the record the assignments? Um, so for board member liaisons, we have Special Education Community Advisory Committee is gonna be trustee Juliana Hart. Uh, for City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives will be trustee Chu and trustee Reiser. For City of Napa Liaison Representatives, it will be trustee Gonzalez Maras, trustee Janquitz, and trustee Water. For Town of Yountville Liaison Representatives, it will be um, trustee Gracia, trustee Janquitz. Going to the Board Advisory Committees. Curriculum and Student Support Committee, um, based on tonight's votes, will be trustees Chu, Reiser, and Water. For Facilities and Technology will be trustees Chu, Hart, and Janquitz. For the Finance Committee will be trustees Gracia, Janquitz, and Water. And for finally, the Policy Committee will be trustee Gonzalez Maras, Hart, and Reiser. Thank you trustees for your service.
All right, next item, H1C, Signature Authorization/Register of Official Signatures of Go- Governing Board Members. It's an action item, can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
I'll second.
First by trustee Reiser, second by trustee Chu. This is a resolution and therefore requires a roll call vote. Uh, Ms. Morales, will you please conduct a roll call vote for us?
Yes, student board member Gomez?
Aye.
Trustee Gracia?
Aye.
Trustee Water?
Aye.
Trustee Reiser?
Aye.
Trustee Chu?
Aye.
Trustee Hart?
Aye.
Trustee Jankowitz?
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Maras?
Aye.
Thank you.
Right, on to the next item, H1D, Board Monthly Stipend Increase.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Reiser, a second by trustee Chu. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment on this item.
Student board rep?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Maybe I. Could I add that the increase is twenty dollars a month?
You can, you can add.
Just to reassure the public.
All right, and then uh, my favorite part of the meeting, I move to adjourn.
That is not your favorite part, I'll second.
First by myself, second by trustee Water, uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.